He needs to go.
Want to get started? I'd like to call meeting order of Higginville Township Planning Commission, May 22nd, 2025. A few announcements. We have four assist listening devices for anyone who's hard hearing, just come forward. In accordance with Resolution 2-2012, you are informed that Scott Stilson, Vincent Drive, will be recording the meeting portion of tonight's meeting and will be posting it on YouTube. This meeting is also available and being recorded electronically through Microsoft Teams. And in accordance with Resolution 20, 2023, the rules of conduct for public meeting and public comment period shall be observed and are listed at the bottom of the agenda. Our first action item for this evening is to approve the minutes of our April 24th meeting. And I'd like to ask for a motion and second to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or comments or corrections that are needed before we vote? Not hearing any, all in favor of approving the minutes from April 24th, 2025, signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? We'll now move to the first public comment session of this evening. When your call provide your name and address to the record, after this, you have three minutes to share your comments regarding any matter with the commission. Is there anyone in the audience that desires to speak at this point? Okay, not seeing any requests, we'll move on to our business items, first being subdivision land development application from Sincarpa Solar from five acres on the Miller Chester County Municipal Authority property located at 58 Davenport Road. In our packet, we had plans, had their request, and we also had technical comments reviewed.
Right, so, yeah, this plan, you saw it, I think, two months ago, two or three months ago, this is the solar bay out at the Rockfish and Chester County Municipal Authority property at the end of Davenport Road. They resplyed and we submitted plans in conjunction with our prior review letter. Our new review letter is in the packets, just to hit the highlights. The only remaining zoning comment is just for them to coordinate with the fire department on suitability of water supply and emergency access. They'll need to comply with that before they can record the plans. From subdivision land development ordinance standpoint, there are two waivers that they're requesting. We did talk about these last meeting regarding the drive aisle and the parking spaces not being paved and remaining in a stone condition. Their waiver request letter cites that their minimal visits per year, three to four scheduled solar maintenance trips, three to four landscaping visits per year, and three to four that may be unscheduled repair visits per year. Their other waiver request was in conjunction to not provide a separate landscape plan. The feedback that the planning commission gave at the last meeting, if I recall correctly, was regarding having conversations with the adjacent owners regarding landscaping to be provided since they would be the most impacted. They have added notes on the plans that they need to do landscaping to the satisfaction of those. My suggestion would be that we have the township solicitor review or put in the improvements agreement what the standards for meeting that required it is and probably a lump sum amount in the financial security for landscaping. So we have funds in there. I think we talked in general where the few gaps may be, so we should be able to come up with a realistic financial security amount for that.
Just a comment on that. Sincarpa has sent the neighboring property owners a notification as far as the development, and today you haven't gotten any response.
Yes, that's correct. I bet every, each of the property owners, a set of our plans, little letter explaining why I'm sending it to them, I invited them to give me comment and give me feedback. I have not heard that from any of them.
Okay, about how long have they been sending this?
I believe the packages were delivered May 10th.
Okay.
Wait, I take that back, May 1st.
May 1st, okay, so they've had a couple weeks to...
Is it too much to ask to go knock on their door?
We did not do that, if that's required.
It was really, maybe a couple.
It's only two or three. Yeah, we approached four different property owners, most of which I think have so much natural tree coverage, probably not even, you know, be very impactful. So we reached out to four people. We actually coincided with four points for the layer survey at least five.
From a stormwater management ordinance perspective, there are just two waivers requested. They met our heat runoff requirements, the volume reduction, water quality. They are in the process of going through the NPDS permit process with the county conservation district and DEP. The two waivers that they're requesting from the township ordinances related to some of these zone infiltration trenches, there are no distribution pipes proposed through those. Normally, the distribution pipes are required to make sure that the entire bed gets the flow. If you recall from the discussions last meeting, it's all sheet flow that will come into those blue outlined trenches on there. So they will be receiving water throughout the entire length of the trench through there. So they've requested a waiver to not put in distribution pipes for those trenches. And then the second waiver request was regarding a drainage swell with a minimum slope of 1%. And that drainage wells generally in the areas between the cullar pipes, the set, this?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you still have the outlet, the outlet pipes still? You have, like...
Yeah, they did add some of those for the trenches. So we ensured that those trenches did de-water or have a de-watering point. They do have daylight pipes for them, four inches out at the ends of the trenches, to help ensure that they do de-water should, most of course, those do de-water within 24 hours of the design storm anyway, but we have the pipes as an additional mechanism there. So those are the two waiver requests. Outside of that, they can agree to comply with everything else that is in our review letter. And as I said, nothing else changed from the layout we spoke in detail about the other month. So, Chris, don't know if you guys have anything to add from your end?
I just asked for clarification on number one, compliance with the zone ordinance with the relationship to the local fire chief. What is being requested there? Do we physically send a set of plans for the fire chief's review?
Yeah, you should send a set of plans for their review and ultimately, we want a written letter or email back from them that, you know, they're satisfied with the emergency access there and the means of water supply will be available for firefighting purposes.
Okay, you wanted to, as far as the building, you contacted the municipal authority as far as the water supply?
Well, I mean, we'll definitely comply with going with the fire marshal. The Keanu Stormwater does have water at the site, whether or not it's a suitable, I think is a, you know, not arson term. There are also, I don't know if they're, and acceptable solution, but there are also our little booms that are pumping truck if we see the leaves in an emergency. Reality is, is that it's a rarity for a panel to catch fire. It's a great rarity, so, and so we will be able to comply.
And we can, we can have an offline conversation about the financial security and what that looks like in terms of construction items and what you'd like to see as far as improvements.
Yeah, I can give you a list of my own that we would normally secure and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Does the planning commission have any comments on the review letter or the requested waivers or the project itself?
It did seem here somewhere that part of the financial security is for dismailing. Did I read it somewhere?
They, that's part of, for the, part of their zoning relief that they did obtain one of the conditions was regarding decommissioning of the facility and things like that. So I think my comment in general is to have the township solicitor weigh in on what the necessary agreements and if there needs to be a security, what those mechanisms for that decommissioning look like, so.
If I may, we also have with our, with our property owner, in part, an obligation of our agreement to post a bond to cover removal, it should now be around the time that their removal happens.
Right, so...
So we could certainly add the township to that bond as well.
Right, so I think that as township solicitor would, we do that agreement that they have the property and then sewer authority and then add whatever type of agreement she feels is necessary to protect the township's interest with that regard. Any other questions or comments?
So first thing we want to do is take action on waivers?
Yep, and you could...
For the waiver request?
Yeah, you could reference the waiver request letter by date if you want to in your motions.
Are we okay with taking all four of the requests together, the two stormwaters and landscaping and the park, and all as one action item, or somebody wants to put it out? Okay. So in their letter dated April 21st, 2025, they have four requests, two stormwaters, section 20, dash 311, 3B, 4A, 3. The other stormwater is section 20, that is 30311 dot 2. Then the two from Saldo are 22629 dot 10 and Saldo regarding the park lease, 22617 dot 1 dot L and 617 dot 1 dot L. The ask is for a motion and a second to take all four of those and it's, the motion could be to recommend to the supervisors to support, recommend approval or not approval.
How many of them do you think we should put? All four of them, do you have?
A second. Okay, are there any further questions or comments on the waiver recommendation? Sure done. Thank you guys for pushing, all in favor of approving or recommending for approval of four waiver requests, signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, and then the next, our next action item would be to recommend preliminary final on land development plans or not based on complying with technical comments letter of May 19th, 2025. Any motions?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions, any questions on the action? The action is to recommend approval condition on meeting, conditional on meeting conditions of the May 19th, 2025, that, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
Okay, this will go on the board of supervisors' agenda for Wednesday, June 11th. Yep, and I'll send your letter documenting the planning commission actions and it'll note the date of that course, surprise us if we need it now.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two subdivision, three board, additional use applications proceeding. First is the Mike's Oak property on Hopple Road. And again, Jen, if you would mind going through the details.
So, wait, just start with, at 300 Hopple Road, Mike's Oak is proposing an attached accessory dwelling unit, their existing dwelling unit, but it is proposed to have more than 50%. The zoning ordinance requirement is that the accessory dwelling unit not have a habitable floor area more than 50% of that of the principal dwelling. Theirs is looking to have about 78% habitable floor area. Even with this addition, their overall impermeas is still below what the law would for the site. So I will bring up the plan so you can see the site layout. So you can see the property's quite a bit off the road. The adjacent property has a pond through here, has the existing conditions planned and then assumed inversion. And here over here, here's the existing dwelling, proposed accessory, existing dwelling, proposed accessory dwelling unit. And here, proposed farm and driveway extension. Over here, they have done a stormwater management plan for the increase in impermeas cover. They're working on their sewage planning module for the, sewage planning module for the septic systems. It will have a lot septic to serve both the existing dwelling and the new dwelling. So the issue before you with zoning hearings is positions of support against or no position to send to the supervisors and ultimately to the zoning hearing board regarding the variance request for floor area. I think Kevin's here, if you have any questions from impact engineering, if you have any questions regarding the proposal, I'm sure they can answer them for you.
If sometime down, and I don't know, this is probably a dumb question, but if this would ever be subdivided, it would have to be a 10 acre parcel, correct?
The property is a, yes.
It's a bank, so if they would subdivide, it would have to be, have to be a minimum of 10 acres.
Yeah, correct, currently the farm, I think, is 67 acres, so if they were to subdivide, the minimum lot area is 10 acres unless they go under those provisions that you can create the one to two acre lots, but that's for a single dwelling. So I don't think you would create a one to two acre lot around that one.
So if it would be a 10 acre, it's still well under the percentage of impermeas that would...
They, ultimately, if they were to subdivide and create a lot around this existing development that's smaller than the 67 acres, they would have to show a lot that complied with a maximum 5% impermeas cover, whatever size lot that is, or seek a variance, you know, at that time as part of that subdivision.
Not that worried about it, just a question.
And I think the dwelling does have, like, multiple floors, so it's not just, you know, the footprint isn't a whole now for their, so.
We usually don't get framing details for ability, assuming requests.
Yeah, they have everything, you know, that's what they would want to pursue for their level requirement, if this variance is created, so.
So how do we feel about, any questions?
So the variance request doesn't include the barn and the driveway, you're just telling about the essential dwelling.
Right, the barn and the driveway, the overall site impermeas applies, it's just a provision that an accessory, detached accessory dwelling unit is supposed to have a habitable floor area of 50% or less of a principal dwelling. For comparison, we do, if they, if you do a detached accessory dwelling unit, that could be up to at least 90% of the floor area, but those have the provision where you're supposed to place the house where you could ultimately subdivide. The land, we do frequently see variances for that subdivision requirement, but, you know, it still falls below what the threshold would be if they were detached.
What if there was such a difference in...
The size requirement?
Yeah, the footprint, yeah, between detached and detached.
My only assumption is that because the provision is in there for detached ones that you're supposed to place that accessory dwelling unit in a position that you could feasibly subdivide the lots in the future, then they allow them to be bigger with the fault that down there may eventually be separated. But I don't really see how it makes a difference. An accessory dwelling unit is an accessory dwelling unit and there's no guarantee that they won't subdivide, you know, in the future for a separate thing.
Is this for family members or...?
Yes. Any other questions? So then what the ask is, is for someone to make a motion, either to support, take no position or action, recommending against creating a variance?
I'll make a motion to support.
Okay. Okay, good motion and a second to support the variance request. Is there any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye? Are there any opposed? Thank you. Next, the office. Our last, our last action item proceeding, which is also a zoning request, this is the Flores property that's located on 179 Pupula Road. Jen?
Yep, you did an introduction. This property's earned, is it Artimo?
Yeah, Artimio.
Oh, boy, Artimio, yeah, okay, I'll do my best. Artimio Flores at 179 Pupula Road, purchased the property almost a year ago. He's applying for a special exception to have a limited impact home occupation on the property. He has landscaping, property maintenance business. He doesn't store or intend to store any materials on site. He has work trucks that employees come to his property, they park, they pick up the work truck, they leave, they go do their work. He's indicated in his application, all landscaping materials and things of that such are delivered directly to the job sites. They won't be delivered here. The first part's a special exception for that. He does have a variance request in conjunction with this, the home occupation's supposed to not start earlier than 7:00 a.m. He's requesting to start, sometimes in the summertime, they start at 6:00 a.m. to get out ahead of the heat and things like that. So they're looking, originally, he's going to put like the parking area towards the very back of the property, due to size limitations, our stormwater requirements, and some floodplain areas there in the back. He's looking to just, on the plan I have up, here's the house, here's an existing garage. Right back behind the existing garage, he's looking to put a parking area. Originally, they were looking at grass, but from the township requirements, we have to do at least stone in there to, that's where the work trucks would park. He does have existing parking off of this driveway, kind of in this area where employees can park, you know, when they come in. So you'd be looking at your position of support, no position, or against on both the limited impact home occupation as well as the variance to start at 6:00 a.m. instead of 7:00. And then the seventh component of this is in terms of stormwater management, they're looking to, it'll be about 4,000 square feet of new impermeas in this little stone area. They were looking for a partial waiver to allow them to use the simplified method to do the stone infiltration trench as opposed to a fully engineered stormwater plan. Yes, yeah, it's that property. So from a technical standpoint for the stormwater waiver, because it has the existing pond and swell, things to a direction of runoff, I'm not opposed to allowing that simplified method to be used. So if you want to add anything, then they can ask any questions they have.
Yeah, if I say with property, if you want to use this part of the show, it's actually the same, and bring my employees in the morning, park their cars, and then we can, here the trucks can leave and go to work. It's not really like running the business from like, I'm not sitting there, cleaning my truck. All the jobs gonna be done outside. Now, if you can see on the map, we have a trench that's existing on this side of property, there runs the water all the way out, it emits the water out, people. The next one is a existing trench, that was right there on this side over here, that when it rains, the water goes into the break, but we also have the pond and we also have the small break on side where the water runs now, so we don't have any problems with, we don't have to worry about. So that's why I'm just looking, if I have to change things, change everything and do the 4,000 square feet, just to keep the trucks on side because there is what I provide the family with food, I provide the family for my clothes, the work, and that's my sustain, that's how I pay my house and all the things that I need for me and my family, so appreciate that for this end.
Do you only have trucks or like, are you, do you have like equipment that you'd be starting up in the morning early or...
Run-mowers, I have run-mowers.
Right.
But in the morning, would you be just starting your trucks in, pulling off or...
Yeah, trucks and leaving, because I really have the, run-mowers already inside the trailer, in the first trailer, so we really have to go in and go after the truck and leave. That's what we used to do.
Right, and we did verify, they sent the registration cards for all the vehicles to make sure they fall below the specials of commercial vehicles, so they are in compliance with commercial vehicle parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. with commercial vehicle parking requirements of the zoning ordinance.
So they're not commercial vehicles, they're just vehicle trucks?
Yeah, they all fall below the.
Go to 6,000.
The 26,000 gross vehicle weight of the trailer falls under the 10,000 pound limit. That's how those are defined in the zoning ordinance.
How many vehicles?
Four shows and two trailers.
Are they heating up?
What, what did the, this come about, was there a complaint or do we know?
There was a initial just complaint about disturbance in the rear where he was getting to park the trucks, but I don't believe we received any noise complaints or anything like that regarding the property. It was just that it looked like there was work being done in the rear of the property. Right.
Only in the winter.
Yeah, it's mostly in the winter, the kind of heat that I don't, but it would be, you say generally it's only in the summertime that it would start at 6:00 AM.
Yes.
To beat the heat, not, you know, 6:00 AM in the winter, it's dark, so.
Right. The newer diesels are here are applying.
What's your answer?
None of the newer diesels are fairly applying.
Yeah, they're very applying. I have a 2014, that means it's, that's mainly us.
Right.
Will you be, would, will that request to start at 6:00, will that go through the year or is that seasonal?
That's seasonal, some.
Would you start in the dark if you were?
Yeah, but if you're working now, I am aware.
And I can understand why you want to start at 6:00, we have traffic down, down the town.
Yeah.
That's exactly why you would do that.
Yeah, in the summertime, you don't speed the heat, so.
If you have a guy that's keeping, if we didn't get started before 6:00, we're in trouble getting in traffic down there.
Yeah, a lot of money's in traffic. I just drive by, I'm afraid it's going to be.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I think I've looked at it like before with some, some of those big huge storms we had with like some debris and stuff swash there, I don't think it's needed, I think it's just a natural.
Little mons or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When do the adjacent property owners get notified?
They would get notified the day of the zoning hearing.
Cause I kind of feel like, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but if the neighbors who have lived there for a long time have a problem with it, then I would.
Right, so I think it's everybody within 500 feet gets notified, so that's where you can always take the position of no position that we see, you know, we've done that in the past and you guys feel like it's really up to either the zoning hearing board or the neighbor impact. So you can take those, I have them listed separate on here, the special exception for the business itself, which qualifies as a limited impact home occup. And then second, you can do a separate motion if your position is different regarding the 6:00 AM start time.
There are more and more louder things on that street than this.
There are.
Let's just say.
About to be jumped out.
Did you at all talk to the neighbors around you?
Yes, I did, I talked to some of the neighbors. I talked to some of them around, they don't have any issues.
They're, they're happy.
That's why I don't support.
At the end of the day, if they come in here and give a joke.
Well, I can stick up for Artemio too, because I do the partnership with Brickon. He ran some space off Newbury trucks for a while, he can have, he can have a problem with them. He's pretty, he's on the best side of the neighborhood. He's a, he's a really decent person, he's willing to come up and not let him do what he wants.
And how many employees come in the morning and employee vehicles would be there?
Two, they come to one.
So only two employees?
Two employees in the morning, yeah.
So that's.
And I have a friend that uses the new, already says, four of us on the crew already so, it's not like I'm running and big trucks and making a whole lot of noise. I live, do my work, some at night time. He didn't take a lot of kids or sleep, you know?
Yeah. Most of our days.
So are we ready to take a position on this? I guess the first thing would be our position on the recommendation for the special exception application to allow landscaped business as a limited impact home occupation. That would be the first action, we should probably take it separate. This will be for the special exceptions, this will go to the zoning hearing board after those decisions.
I'll make a motion, a second.
Are there any, any other further questions or comments?
No, I mean, I would just add that I, I mean, I'll support it, but it's a problem for the first party. I mean, those people have lived there a long time, I just apologize to them, so.
That would be the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, I just hate not hearing from them and saying, you know.
Okay, all in favor of supporting the recommendation to support special exceptions to the supervisors and zoning hearing board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the second request is to allow limited impact home occupation hours to start at 6:00 instead of 7:00 AM in the morning.
That would be a variance, yes.
That would be a recommendation to just the supervisors. Looking for a motion versus a direction?
I'll make a motion, support.
A second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor of taking a position to recommend supporting the variance application, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Just while we're there, with regard to the stormwater management waiver to allow the simplified method instead of the fully engineered plan for the increase in impermeas associated with the vehicle parking area, does the planning commission, that's a board of supervisors ultimate decision, but do you have any feedback or comment on that for the board?
I don't have a problem with using the simplified method.
Okay. Got it.
Anyone else agree? Okay. Eric, thank you.
Yeah, so they'll have the same type of informal discussion before the board supervisors at their June 11th meeting.
Okay.
And then the zoning hearing board's listener will get in touch with you to schedule their official date for the zoning hearing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other business. We're now at the, the second public comment section of the meetings, is there any public comment? Jerry?
I was just wondering about your solar farm. Is he going to be required to have any suppression equipment on there to fight that type of fire? Cause it's going to be electrical fire, it's not going to be a regular house fire. That's all I was concerned about.
Right, he'll have to, one, meet all of the building code requirements for that type of solar energy system. I can't speak to what's required by the code. They have to submit a commercial building permit for those and then we do have them, you know, required to have confirmation from the fire department that they are, you know, satisfied with those things. So he'll meet whatever we can legally hold him to.
Okay, that's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Any questions from the planning mission? Our upcoming meet, the upcoming meetings and the various groups are there and.
Just for your information, if you have a June planning commission meeting, our plan deadline I think is next Tuesday, the 27th. If we have zoning hearings come in afterwards, but Mike Viner will be here in my place, I'll be in Atlanta, that's under the Skills USA competition, so you'll be stuck with Mike.
Well, good luck with your son.
Thank you.
I ask for a motion in seconds with Jerry.
Make a move with Jerry.
A second, we have a motion in second, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Unrelated to what?
Unrelated to me.
Oh, what's that?
EBT, y'all have some questions that I have to ask you to the listener.
What's prayer?
I'll give you a hand.